Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Announcements, Acknowledgements, Communications and Reports. At this time, we will have a presentation by the MCEP Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jewlyn Matuzik, and one of the other things, I'm the President of the Macomb Cultural and Economic Partnership, and this is Ed Gurley, who is the Secretary. We are the folks that put all those sculptures around town. And this project started four years ago with eight sculptures, and this year, we have 24 sculptures on display. We are growing each year. We intend to do it again next year. We rent the sculptures from the Midwest Sculpture Initiative, and we rent them from October to October. So every October, we have the big change out and the big reveal, which is always great fun. We work with local businesses and organizations and individuals to find locations for them. There is a rental fee for each of the sculptures. Sometimes people go together and contribute until we have one whole rental fee paid. Other times, people will, both businesses will donate their location and the rental fee. And we have started to hold fundraisers in the community. We have had three or four over the past year. We're going to do that again so that people can frequent a local restaurant. We usually do a drive-through restaurant pickup meal. So we're supporting local businesses and, and community members can contribute a small amount of money towards the, the cost of the sculpture. And we were able to purchase three, rent three additional sculptures this year just on that fundraising activity. The other thing is that people can purchase these sculptures. So this year, although we have 24 of them on display, seven of them have actually been purchased for permanent display. Some of them will remain on the properties where they're at. Others will be, after a year, be moved to other locations people want them to be at. So in addition to renting these sculptures, we're starting to develop a little group of sculptures that will be here permanently. MCEP itself has purchased three sculptures that will be here, and we cover all of the administrative costs of the program. And we contribute a significant amount of volunteer hours, our office people and Ed and myself and others, to organize it, find the locations, place them. Sometimes we rearrange them if we don't like where they've been placed. We'll get three or four of us and we'll shift them around a little bit. And then we try to publicize them in a way that provides people with a map of where they are, so you can follow along in a walking map, which is a great way to bring people into the city, to get them on the ground, walking around. So we are very pleased to be able to do this for the city. We think it, it helps build the image of the city as an art city. We believe art is economic development, and we're very happy to do that. Want to turn it over to you?
Sure. We are also starting a process now, with two or three volunteers last year, where we're trying to do micro gardens. So we've taken on with people, the bus stop on southbound Grashit by the prosthetics building, tried to make that a place, the corner over at Bellevue and southbound, someone else was doing that. We've also tried to take on the front of the post office, which has been a traditional problem. Post office had a lot of issues, and we've dug up the front and hopefully this spring and summer, we're going to have permanent flowers there to do it. So one of our other goals now is to begin, in conjunction with the sculptures, these permanent volunteer-led efforts to make the city look better. We also started last summer, mini tours, if you will. On a summer's evening, we have three of the artists on call. We have a group, we've averaged about 20 people, who'll show up, walk to the sculpture. Everyone has a cellphone, and the artist will call in on a conference call, and then be able to answer questions, talk to people. And so we did that successfully three times last year, two with the sculptures and one with the paintings in downtown Mount Clemens. So we hope to make that a bigger part this year.
It's one of the things we learned during COVID. We have all this technology now, so now we can conference call artists while we're standing on a street corner and talk to the artists themselves. It was really a fun and interesting thing to do. So we just wanted to come and let you know that we've made this investment in Mount Clemens. If you look at the little sheet, you'll, you'll see some of the numbers that we've talked about and some of the information. But we're committed to doing this and to continuing to do this and to continuing to make Mount Clemens an interesting place to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm interested, what sculptures were purchased recently?
I'm sorry?
Which sculptures were purchased recently?
The, the, the leaves that are sort of falling over, that's, that was a private purchase.
The bee in front of the...
The bee, the let it be sculpture.
The train.
The fish in front of First Presbyterian.
The train.
First Methodist, sorry, whatever, the one on the corner.
Yeah, First Methodist.
First Methodist.
The most controversial, the three faces.
The three faces that Robertson, the church purchased that.
And the train, right?
Oh, and the one at the train station.
And the, what did you pick? Dancer?
Oh, the dancer.
Oh, she is.
That's my personal favorite one. So we, MCEP purchased that one.
Oh, good.
So we may, the ones that have been purchased, I said, a few private owners will take them away, but the ones we've purchased will stay in the city but may get rearranged into different locations so other people see them.
What about the geese? I thought you were purchasing the geese.
The geese are purchased.
Oh, I didn't know that. There we go. I do like the geese because sometimes the real live geese come and interact with us.
I will say, my kids really find that entertaining, when the geese are with the geese.
You can try to vary them so that there's some that are whimsical and some that are more serious. We try to have a distribution of, because people have different impressions and wants, so we try to make it as varied as we can.
And the people that host the statues and have, and have supplied the rental fee are engaged in picking out which one they want in front of their property.
I was a part of putting, picking the sculptures this year in, from the catalog, and so if you don't like them, I guess you can complain to me. But, but it, I want to just mention that it was a, there's a lot of thought and, you know, really good intentions behind all of them and where they're placed and how they're placed, and it's a lot of legwork. So thank you to, to you two especially for all of that. Mr. Steven Saft had a big part in that, and Kathy Banks. And there was a lot of people behind that that really did a lot of hours of work. And, I mean, there are a lot of argues, arguments of...
All in good faith, I'm glad it's fine, but they were...
Yeah, discussions.
And let me, let me just make my final disclaimer.
Yeah.
No taxpayer or public money is used in this project. It is all private donations. Except for the DDA, which this year made a small contribution to, for two sculptures. So this is, other than that DDA contribution, this is all private money and not government money.
So I am very interested in that micro garden business. So are you going to...
We're going to just start to begin the publicity on that. What we do in that is ask a person to take care of a small area. They agree on the area. We get permission from the owner or the publicness, whatever agency has it. We supply the materials that you need. So in other words, if there are plans to be bought, we'll get all of that. You put it together, if you're in need, if you're a person that likes this but doesn't have the tools. We have a small bank of tools that you can borrow from us to do it. So it could be something that anybody who wants to do from a, just a postage stamp size to a little bit bigger size. And we think that it can really make a difference in the way properties look. And to, to bring that about, we think that bus stop has really changed its appearance with the sculpture and the things. And in the fall, we put in tulips and daffodils and stuff like that. So we're trying to make a plant investment, if you will, in the, in the neighborhood. So anyplace along southbound, northbound, or Main Street, we're trying to make those improvements. And so you only do what you can do, and if a person says after a while, oh, golly gee, something came up, all you need to do is to tell us so that we're not in question, and then we'll put the connection together to make it happen. So there's a fallback for you. You're not like committed for life. You're committed for one planting season, and even then, if you have difficulty, we'll help. Thank you.
Thank you again. We appreciate it.
See ya.
We'll move on to, well, are there any other announcements, acknowledgements, communications or reports, Mr. Johnson?
No, ma'am.
We'll move on to adoption of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please. Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
This is the portion of the meeting where we invite the public to address the commission. We ask that you give us your first name, I'm sorry, we, we ask us, we ask that you give us your full name and your residential address. We will, we will take people from, in person first, and then Zoom. Do we have people on Zoom? Okay. We'll go ahead and ask if there's anyone in person if they would like to address the commission. Good, go ahead.
All right. Ryan Theory, 62 Rosebud. I can kind of pass some of these out later, but going through the map, you know, you see St. Mary's School is missing, number one. I highlighted the 1,000 feet because, yeah, there's 70 plots there, but are they sellable? Is it reasonable? Everybody thinks marijuana is so much money. Nobody's coming in with $2 million to build a dispensary, 3 million, 5 million. Also on this map, Comtech, belongs to Macomb County, 117 Roseback. Are they selling? I don't think so. U-Haul's right next to them. It's a huge facility. They're not selling. Freightliner next to them, they're not selling. Go up and down Rose Street. Is Powdercoast selling any time that we know? They have the entire block. You guys have this on the sheet, not you, because I know we're all trying to do our best. But as I said at the last meeting, I surveyed, boots on the ground, at 1,000 feet, there's only a possibility of five. That's it, okay? You guys go back to utilities. Is CNN Railroad getting rid of their utilities? Is Consumers Energy on grand? Not for sale. You guys have a place here on Church, which belongs to a tower. Are we getting rid of our communications? There's two towers listed on here, okay? So if you guys go through this list, please drive up and down Rose Street. The other side of Rose Street has five residences, okay? You can change that in your ordinance. I understand the difference between a residence and residential zoning, but you guys have the power to say, not near any residence. And what that would make is Rose Street, hey, if somebody wanted to come in and buy three houses in a row and another building and spend 1.5 million, God bless them, okay, for a dispensary. The other areas, North River Road, there's two that we identify in North River Road. There's an Amoco gas station, there's a safe storage. They both make plenty of money. They're not selling. I don't know across the street at Rose Tech, they own, it looks like they're pretty new, Rosen Maddox or something's the name of them, there's pictures in here, but they're fairly well-off, precision tool type builder. I don't think they're leaving anywhere. So my point of the matter is that isn't what you see on the map. Go out there. This is our community, okay? A and E, God bless them because they're being told what they can do, but again, at 1,000 feet, there's only four and five. And when you start getting down to these numbers, you can actually see it, okay? Mary Street, I wish Mr. Tingley was here, but anybody that knows anything about building, okay? AT&T is on Mary Street, CNN Railroad. Can I take this for a minute?
I can't do that, sorry.
I'll see you, I'll see you again.
Here, me Chris, I yell all 32411, Mount Road. I was having a tough time in the workshop hearing everything, and I forgot one question, and you don't have to answer, Mike, you can just nod your head. We're still moving towards unlimited, right? That was kind of the whole workshop, sort of.
That's hard to tell.
All right. But, so I can go back and tell my clients, sort of, that's kind of where we left it off from the workshop, right? Right, Mayor? Towards unlimited? Yes, no?
The answer. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I couldn't hear everything.
Yes, that's what our, that's what, that's what the, everything was uncapped when we left it in the...
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thomas Barnes, 291 Jones Street. I guess I'm the only one that doesn't want to talk about marijuana. So it was a pleasure sitting in, listening to everybody during strategic planning the other day. And I have one question that came up in the strategic planning meeting, which was, your moderator asked, there were a bunch of yellow dots on the wall when we started talking about recreation, and he asked for some insight and some input as to those who put those yellow dots up about recreation, and there was no response. So here we are. I pulled up the City of Mount Clemens' Parks and Recreation Plan that expired in 2021. Full Parks and Recreation Plan that expired last year. It is now 2022. What is the city's plan after strategic planning for parks and recreation in the City of Mount Clemens? As a resident, a business owner, and a dedicated volunteer to the city, I would like to know where the investment is. We talked about how to be a more inclusive city in this strategic planning session. One of my suggestions to the City of Mount Clemens was significant investment in public spaces. How do you let communities know that you care about them? You invest in their public spaces. I understand that in 2005, the City of Mount Clemens was faced with a lot of very hard decisions. Trying to run a $12.8 million budget on a $700,000 general fund had to be tough. For those employees and people who were elected at the time, who stuck it out, we all commend you very much for the rough decisions that had to be made. But right now, this is a very different city, and we're in a very different position financially. And I just want to ask you, what is the Mount Clemens that you want to leave for your children and grandchildren? I have a nine-year-old daughter that's growing up in the City of Mount Clemens. All of her friends live in a different city. We go to birthday parties. I got to drive out of the City of Mount Clemens because that's where all of her friends live at. I would really like, before my daughter becomes a teenager, to have parks and places where my daughter can go and hang out with new friends that she met, playing soccer and playing baseball, and having these leagues and groups set up. It is, it's high time to stop passing the buck on the future of our children and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission in person? Okay, we'll go ahead and move over to Zoom. Eric, will you unmute, please? Uh, nope, not yet, hang on. Nope, hang on, Patrick's working on it. How about now? That's all right, you have a solution. I don't think you can make fun of Mr. Bates anymore.
Testing 123.
Okay, there you are, Eric, thank you.
Wonderful. Uh, yes, Eric Rick, 1689 Hampton Road. I just wanted to let everyone know, the Memorial Day Ceremony is scheduled for the 29th at Clinton Grove Cemetery. That's the 29th of May. Starting at 11:00, everyone is welcome. Please be reminded that parking at the veterans' section of the cemetery is somewhat limited, so if you're able to park at the main parking and walk there, it would be appreciated. The cemetery has generously offered to allow potential use of their golf cart to get people back and forth, if needed, in a limited basis, but generally, parking is, is somewhat limited. Hopefully, you'll all be able to make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have one other? Nope, that's it? Okay. All right, we will move on then. Sorry. Pull my agenda back up, sorry. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to general business. I'm sorry, approval, uh, sorry, administrative responses to issues or questions raised during the last meeting. Do we have any, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the regular city commission meeting minutes for February 22nd, 2020, and the special commission meeting minutes for February 23rd, 2022.
Support.
Roll call, please. Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yeah.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, now we're moving on to general business. Item A, second reading and adoption of the Marijuana Business Ordinance. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The, the motion that's, I recommended in writing is to table the business ordinance indefinitely so that we can bring it back when we've actually come to some conclusions in work sessions. However, the city attorney has indicated that he would just assume that we vote on it and defeat it because we're making so many changes, he'd like to start over in first reading.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Okay, then let's go ahead and, well, we still need a motion to vote, right?
No, if nobody moves at the second reading, it's going to fail.
No, wait, 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 wait. I'm getting there, I'm slow.
Sorry.
Nobody makes a motion to, to move and adapt.
Well, so, okay, so I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion. Okay, motion fails. Moving on to B. You, now you can get, try to get to B, Commissioner Dempsey, sorry. All right, general business. B, rezoning of vacant Macomb Daily Drive parcel 05-11-12-453-005. Introduction and first reading. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance authorizing the rezoning of property from light industrial to heavy industrial and set the second reading and adoption for March 21st, 2022.
Support.
Mr. Johnson?
Okay, on March 1st, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the proposed rezoning and voted unanimously to recommend that the rezoning be approved. The subject property is slightly less than an acre, .909 acres, and it's vacant. It's one of two parcels that comprise what's commonly referred to as the Gibraltar Site and is under the same ownership as the larger parcel, which is 66.913 acres. The larger parcel is zoned heavy industrial, while the subject parcel is zoned light industrial. The applicant wishes to have both parcels under the same zoning.
All right, anybody have questions or comments?
Did they give a reason why they wanted both under the same zoning? Was there something they planned to do, or...
Having the entire parcel under the same zoning is to their advantage in terms of trying to do anything with the property.
And I believe that in a meeting, Mr. Tingley kind of didn't have a reasoning on why it was ever like that. We think it was kind of a, oh, would you, all right, Mr. Tingley, would you like to explain why we think that that little piece of property is light industrial instead of heavy?
Sure, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, we, yeah, we did do research on the parcel, and it does go back to, to light industrial, at least when we adopted a previous zoning map in 2003. Going further back, I believe this property was actually located close to township at one point. And so that's why it's separate from the larger Gibraltar site.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
It's, it's a lesser zoning classification. The permitted uses under heavy are, are, are less than the permitted uses under light. So really, it's more restrictive if it's rezoned than it's present, I guess. Heavy industrial is probably the most restrictive zoning classification.
When we did all the rezoning, I'm surprised it wasn't brought then.
I think because it was, it's always just been seen as Gibraltar, right? So nobody's really noticed.
But in heavy, you can put marijuana.
Or you could put her in either one.
Light.
But maybe not after it goes out. That's where our minds are going right now.
All right, does anybody else have any questions or comments on that one? All right, we'll go ahead and call the vote. Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Agenda item C, special event permit for the Lions Club White Cane Week.
Mayor Krap, being a past president of the Mount Clemens Lions Club, I would like to move that we grant permission to the Mount Clemens Lions Clubs to conduct charitable solicitations within the roadways of Crocker Boulevard and northbound Grashit, Cass Avenue and southbound Grashit, for no more than three days between April the 23rd, 2022, and May 1st of 2022.
Support.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments about the White Cane Week? Hearing none. We'll call the roll. Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
We're losing all our audience. Uh, we'll go ahead and move to Agenda Item D, special event permit for Greater Morning Star Church Car Parade. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Greater Morning Star Missionary Baptist Church 100th Anniversary Car Parade on Friday, April 15th, 2022, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, this is a similar activity to those Greater Morning Star has done in the past, and we have no objection to it.
Right, does anybody have any questions or comments? Right, does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Okay, the nine one one resolution, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution in support of the forty-two cent telephone surcharge to support nine one one services.
Support.
Okay, um, Mr. Johnson, do you want to call Mr. Shipman on this one, or?
He should be on the line, but I will start off.
Okay.
At the February twenty-first meeting, this item was tabled. Administration was asked to bring back information on how Macomb County was planning to use their ARPA funds. Actually, I believe CARES was stated, but it, it, ARPA is what was meant. Because CARES is overdone with. Chief, Chief Shipman, uh, talked to his contacts at the county and was told the county hasn't decided how they would use their ARPA funds yet. They also noted that ARPA is a one-time revenue, not suitable for sustaining an ongoing operation, and that Macomb is the only county in Michigan not currently using this fee. Additionally, based on our own familiarity with ARPA, I don't believe that this would be an allowable use for ARPA funds. Uh, Chief Shipman points out that the dispatch improvements will almost certainly occur, uh, whether this is approved or not. And if not funded through the telephone device surcharge, it will be funded through future charges to the communities they dispatch for, including Mount Clemens. So administration continues to recommend the commission adopt the resolution of support, which is attached. All this is, is a resolution of support. It ends up being up to the county commission. Uh, it's not really a decision of the city commission.
Anybody have questions, comments?
How is it that Macomb County was the only county in the whole state that never went with this?
Kind of ludicrous, isn't it?
Uh, I can't answer that question as to what the reasons were, how that came about, but it's just a fact. Every, every other county in Michigan is, is doing this, but Macomb is not yet. Chief, if you're there, do feel free to chime in.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a few communities that don't participate. They did a millage instead. There's only just a few, but everybody's collecting something either through the surcharge or they just did a separate millage. And I believe this act came in place in nineteen eighty-six. So since nineteen eighty-six, Macomb County has found a way not to, you know, make the surcharge, uh, happen here. They've funded it in other ways, so I, I take my hat off to them for waiting this long to do it, actually.
Commissioner Dempsey?
I spoke to three county commissioners today on this because I had a couple other questions that I didn't think of at the time. And they are also questioning, um, the ARPA money. They, some of them feel that it should fall under infrastructure, because it is infrastructure, uh, fiber optics, some communities. So, and the reason it didn't pass the last time was, the county commissioners stated that, um, they felt it wasn't the right timing to ask the public because of COVID and everything else and people out of work, so, uh, it's going to be on their agenda this month. When I was talking to them, I voiced my concerns, and I just, I'm just going to tell you, I'm voting no on a resolution, even though I have no control over how the county commissioners vote on this. We pay five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars to dispatch. Half a million dollars. A lot of the communities in Macomb don't, because they have their own dispatch. So, you know, I find every year it's gone up. Uh, last year was five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Now it's up again. So, we, I think, and our residents are paying. Now, the county is obligated to, and they have a line item for dispatch and for upgrades. So my question was, this three million dollars we're going to raise, is this above and beyond what is already slated for the dispatch, or is this in lieu of what is already slated for dispatch? Will they take that money out once they receive this three million, whatever, some odd change, whatever? And will that other money then just fall into the general fund? Now, the county has lots of money, and I just feel the timing is not right. Gas is up, and I know this is not a lot of money, but it's just another fee for ten years that'll be added on to a family of five, that's thirty dollars. And that may not sound a lot to some of us in this room, but it is to people who are on fixed incomes or families. And I just, I just have this feeling that I think we are paying a lot, and they haven't answered that question. One, about the ARPA, and that's a question that the county commissioners are also going to be addressing. And two, will this be a replacement, or will it, um, supplement, I mean, you know, will it supplement or be added to? And I think that's a big question to ask. I mean, I know that what we're paying is a hefty fee for a small community of fifteen thousand nine hundred people. Um, so, that's my reasoning. Uh, like I told the county commissioners, I just wanted to just share my feeling, you know, I, I just think inflation's at all-time high and the timing just isn't right, as far as I'm concerned. And I think the county has the money at this point to do whatever repairs they need to do. Or, since most of this is going north, from what I understand, those communities are much better off than we are. And so, that's my reasoning, and I just wanted to state it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else with comments or questions?
Was there any discussion about the money that we pay now, if there was going to be a change in that, or are we still paying it, or?
We're still paying it.
We still have to pay that?
Yeah, it's, it's budgeted, this coming budget year for five hundred and forty-three thousand.
We're, we're also contractually bound right now for another two and a half years and.
If I could, city manager, I, I would just like to reiterate, just, because I don't want to get, and I don't have to talk, like, either way, but I don't want to get confused that this money is just going to the sheriff's dispatch. They're one of nine dispatch agencies in the county. So this money will be distributed between all nine of those PSAs to the county. And the money that they get is audited by the state to make sure that they spend it on allowable expenses. So each year, they get audited by the state.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments for either Chief Shipman or Mr. Johnson? Okay, seeing or hearing none, we'll call the roll, please.
Campbell?
No.
Dempsey?
No.
Fournier?
No.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
I have a question.
Okay.
I, 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 I just wanted to know, in the mayoral appointment, I, I didn't see anything about the planning committee, and I think you had mentioned that you were, uh, interviewing people?
Yes, we are.
Are you still doing that?
Yep, we are.
And there's still an opening?
Right.
Okay, that's all.
Thanks. Okay, um, we have a motion. Do we have a support?
Support.
Wonderful. Okay, uh, call the roll, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Start with downtown. Uh, on February twenty-fifth, WXYZ Television Channel Seven ran a very nice story on Mount Clemens Business Revival, which sparked even more interest from businesses looking at locating, uh, in downtown Mount Clemens. Mickey received several phone calls as a result of that. It also sort of resulted in a follow-up article in the Macomb Daily, uh, specifically on Joe Nahas' purchase of the Van Camp Building. That article included one of three different architects' renderings. I think most of the commissioners have already seen all three, but, uh, the, the picture that they showed in the paper was by far my least favorite of the three. Uh, it's the most modern of the three designs, and I'm hoping he chooses one of the other two, which are more traditional, and I provided the one that I like the best. Uh, the other one is very similar. There's not, not a whole lot of difference. Macomb County Economic Development Department is preparing marketing materials for the Macomb Daily Building and the old Huntington Bank Building. If you didn't notice, uh, Gumbo's, uh, has completed the, the re, their expansion, and now is beer and wine available on their menu. I was informed last week that Redhead Creative entered the work they did for Mount Clemens in the American Advertising Awards Competition, and the city of Mount Clemens Brad, Grant won a gold addy, which means it's automatically entered in the national award competition, which is announced in June. COVID cases have leveled off following a steep decline. Uh, hospitalizations and deaths continue to decline. The state relaxed its masking guidelines, uh, and the city has followed suit. Everyone aged five and older is still eligible to receive a COVID vaccine. Uh, just go to the link here from Macomb County Vaccine Central. Uh, there are also free COVID tests available, and there's a link here where you can order your tests. Some people reported getting their tests very quickly. It took me about a month from the time I ordered mine before they showed up. And also, Macomb County Community Action is distributing, uh, KN ninety-five masks to Macomb County residents that need them. They're available for pickup at their food pantries and at the community action centers. And then we've got a listing of future agenda items. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the public participation. This is the second opportunity for the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you abide by our, uh, two-minute rule. Give us your full name and your residential address. Go ahead, go ahead and do first, first in person and then Zoom.
Hi, Diana Avenue, twenty-six Riverside Drive. I actually have two questions. First question is, in passing the consent agenda with the DDA calendar of events, um, are we having the fireworks this year?
Yes.
Okay.
It's easy.
And the second is, um, hearing about the two buildings, the Macomb Daily Building and the Huntington Bank Building, does that mean now that they are city property, or are they being marketed for
Oh, no.
private people?
No, right.
It's all private. We're just reporting what's going on.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jean Dixon, and I live at one fourteen Meadow Street. I just want to say, um, thank you, commission, for approving Greater Morning Star Car Parade for a second year. I, um, I am the co-chair, and we had a great time last year, and we look forward to having a good time again this year. And that'll be, that will be culminating our one hundredth church anniversary. And then the last full week in April, we're going to have our one hundred and first anniversary with the revival. So it's all week long, and it's going to start at six thirty. Come out and join us if you would like. Uh, our pastor, Tyrone B. Martin, he's excellent, and we have Bishop Wiley, that used to be, um, a minister at Greater Morning Star, and Stafford, uh, Dr. Stafford. So please come and join us. Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else?
All right, I'll be there. High and sixty-two, but, uh, you guys are close with your one thousand feet. You guys just have to look. I'll leave some pictures here for you. You can look into it. I'd like to maybe set up an appointment with the city manager. You guys are almost right there. Um, a lot of municipalities call this a marijuana ordinance and safety procedure, or marijuana and safety ordinance. You guys have a lot of leeway. You guys can, you know, take an area of a map and start a joy road, which is next to a park, but it's also next to a community. You can say, hey, for public safety reasons, we're only going to allow roads in that area, okay? You can look at the one last spot, which is on Maslow, one sixty-five Maslow, in a little condominium area. You guys have the power to say, if a hundred cars a day come in this area, it's going to clog up the traffic, it's not feasible. But you also have to realize, those buildings that are ten thousand square feet need one point five car spaces per every hundred and fifty feet. So it becomes a zoning thing, and that's where Mr. Tingley would really help you guys out. Just because you look at this huge building and says there's an opportunity, that's only going to leave an opportunity for a road. So you guys got to be really realistic. I'm here to help. I'll buy drinks at the rec booth, anybody wants to come over and ask, but I kind of am an expert. I've been doing this for four years. I've had one of the first temporary forward licenses. Backward licenses, we're even out there. I want my funds to move forward. And the bottom line is, if you end up with a fifth dispensary, is that so bad? Our kids can need it. It sounds like we need some money for our kids. It sounds like we need money for other things, so if a fifth dispensary pops up, what's wrong with an extra sixty thousand a year in revenue? That's it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom? Oh, oh. Sorry, I'm, go ahead, it's fine.
Thomas Barnes, two ninety-one Jones. Just to, in summation, I just want to say to all of you, uh, please don't forget about us. I, I said it, and I said this before, I said it about eighty percent of these meetings, both the school board and the city commission meetings. And I hear a lot of talk about downtown, and I hear a lot of talk about businesses, but I would like to hear a lot of talk about residents in our neighborhoods, and what keep us safe, and what helps our children, and what helps our older people. I know that a lot of people probably watching on camera, and a lot of you probably think, you know, Tom, this is some kind of self-interest play for Tommy, because Tommy works with kids. But I'll be honest with you, the greatest thing that I've seen happen at the parents' community center in the last four weeks is Ms. Jean and this Rainbow Coalition, the ladies that show up on Tuesday and Thursday morning doing crocheting and sewing together. There's middle-aged women that I've never seen before. There's older ladies, and they all sit there together and gossip for three hours while sewing tote bags together and pulling yarn out of bags that I have never seen before. These ladies come in with these whole little suitcases full of stuff, and they sit there and they just gossip. Opening the doors of this place gave them a place to feel like this is where they needed to be at. In addition to the multiple programs being run by the Mount Clemens Public Library, where you have our kids that are under five years old, that aren't old enough to go to school yet, that are enjoying these reading programs with Ms. Joyce. There's a lot of stuff happening positively for this community. Just while you're focusing on downtown and Cherry Street and all of the new businesses and how great the coffee is at Black Cat, just don't forget about us too, because it's our tax dollars that help to move the city forward. Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom? Okay, all right. We'll go ahead and move to commissioners' comments. Mr. Campbell, Commissioner Campbell?
I would like to know where the progress is regarding the code enforcement and how things are going to be streamlined to move these light cases forward. I was out walking the other day, and there was a patrol car at a house that had five mailboxes on it. That is not a good sign when you see a house with five mailboxes on it. That is not going to attract people to the city. So I want to know where we're at with regards to that. Also, I want to know what, I know the sheriff is responsible for going after cars that are on the street. There's been a car that I've talked to the city manager about that has been on the street for months with two flat tires and no plate on it. That is unacceptable. So I want to know what the sheriff, are they actively going after these cars that are sitting there with flat tires? What's taking place with them? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
Yes. I want to thank Ruthie Stevenson for, um, the Greater Morning Star lot at the corner of Barbersin and Grashit with the statues of confessions. She went out there and placed some sunflowers, I believe, and a sign of support Ukrainians, which we get a lot of comments about how nice that is at that corner. So thank you. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Fournier?
Thank you, Mr. Ruthie. I was going to bring that up, how nice that looked, and I didn't know who did it, but now I do. So thank you very much. And thanks to all the people at MCEP for, um, the sculptures, and I'm really very excited about the mini gardens. I hope we can make a difference there, especially at that doggone post office, so, um, I, I hope we continue to do that. Everybody gets involved with that. And I agree, Mr. Campbell, or Commissioner Campbell, that there's been certain situations that I have now asked the city to look into for, and it's been more than a year. I never get any feedback. The situation is still happening, and it's very I never get any feedback, the situation is still happening and it's very frustrating. And, you know, they're very obvious situations. They're on main streets of the city that people have to drive by them. And I, so perhaps this, this idea of having administrative corps or whatever will help with that, but I would like some feedback on some of those issues and work towards resolution of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dempsey?
I just want to thank all the board members for working as hard as we are working on the marijuana ordinance. Didn't think we'd still be talking about it, but I think we're making progress and I know it must be very frustrating for Mr. Murray. But just stick with us, we'll get it done eventually. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Mayor Krop. I, first of all, would like to thank Mr. Thury, you do your homework. You're, you know, you're not like some of the people on Facebook that, you know, float like a butterfly and then sting like a bee. You know your stuff and I appreciate that. Mrs. Stevenson, again, thank you very much for your display for the Ukrainians. My son-in-law is of Ukrainian descent and it's been a major heart problem for him, you know, with the relatives over there. I guess with that, once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Thank you. Commissioner Menzur?
I'd like to give a shout out to Jocelyn Ryan, she's twelve, she's in the seventh grade at Saint Mary's. Jocelyn represented Saint Mary's in the twenty-twenty-two Macomb County Scripps Howard Spelling Bee that was held at AMISD yesterday. Thank you, Jocelyn, for repping Mount Clemens in a positive light. I would like to give a shout out to the high school Lady Bathers, who, who, Lady Bathers Basketball Team, who are now the district, Division Three District Champions. They defeated New Haven forty-six to thirty-three, so go Bathers. Come on, you can say it too.
Once a Bath, they're always a Bath, right? All right.
And, and I'd also, I would like to give a shout out to Sheila Moore Beeman. Sheila, I'm glad you're, you're home and I'm glad you're well or doing better and I can't wait to see you again soon, so take care and welcome home.
Thank you, excellent. I just want to, again, thank MCEP, I think the sculptures add so much and the addition to the, the sculptures on Robertson by Ruthie, we, it's awesome. And you've done flags around them at all the other holidays and you always add something to them, so we really appreciate it. I think you actually technically started the first micro garden because you, you always had the, you added stuff to the sculpture, so. And I would like to thank the commissioners as well on the work on the, and the staff, on the, the maps have really helped this time and I think continuing this dialogue, even though we don't always agree, is difficult. But I think I'd also, we've been dealing with a lot of issues that have been, you know, that have taken a lot of our time. We had two extra meetings for strategic planning and I know that we don't all agree on the importance of that, but I think, I really appreciate that everyone came to the table and really worked on that. So thank you to all of you and I think it really helps give our staff a direction and our community lets our community know that we're moving the city forward and trying to align our resources with having goals for the city. So I'm really proud of that initiative. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Meeting adjourned, thank you, thank you, everyone.